Okay, so it's past six o'clock. We can begin our meeting and we'd like to start with the pledge allegiance. So if everybody would like to stand, join me in their receding. See if I can get my pen up here. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as long. That worked really poorly, so.
Greg, if I could just make an announcement for any folks that have joined or coming in from the public, please keep your cameras off and they'll be muted until the time when we get to the public hearing portion. There is the raise your hand function in Zoom that can be used at that time to make sure, or if you select star nine on your telephone, we'll be able to get you in. Thank you. Just reminder to everybody that if you can mute yourself until it's time to speak, that way we won't get a bunch of feedback and there's one other thing, but I lost it from here.
Did you hear somebody else, ma'am?
I did, but it escaped my mind, so we're okay. Oh, roll call votes. Everything will be taken by roll call.
Yes. Okay, and I assume, well, do we need to take attendance or you've already got that?
I've already got that. I'm all set.
All right. So are there any additions or deletions to the agenda before we get started here? And we did have the additions that Sarah sent out earlier, so I assume those are part of this. Anything else? Will you entertain a motion for the agenda the way it's presented for us in this last version? Roger, we have support. Michelle? You have this, Sarah?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so you want to take a roll call for the agenda?
Um, Michelle?
Hi.
Audra? Yes, sorry. Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Larry is absent. Thank you. And Nick? Nick? Thank you.
Yes.
There we go.
Thank you.
Okay, so the agenda has been approved then. Next up will be the approval of the minutes of the March 24th, 2020 regular meeting. So Sarah, you're on again. Well, I guess, excuse me, we need a motion. My bad. We can't skip to that yet. Roxanne, did you take that? And then Roger, this was the second. Now it's you, Sarah.
Thank you. Michelle? Michelle?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Larry is absent. And Nick?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's carried.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Moving down to communications. First up, we have receipt of communication from the Arbor Day Foundation announcing that the city of Alma has earned the recognition as the 2019 Tree City USA. Entertain a motion to receive that. So moved. Okay, Nick and then Roger, I believe. Motion's supported. Is there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, Sarah, go for it.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Larry? Nick?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that has passed. Next, we have receipt of a communication from DMVK of LaPierre Incorporated requesting an extension of the one-year timeline granted May 28th, 2019 for construction and occupancy of its medical marijuana provisioning center located at 528 Warwick Avenue. Entertain a motion to receive that communication. Looking for a wave. We see Roger and Michelle. I believe you have that, Sarah, so you're on.
Thank you. Roger? Roxanne?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Larry? Nick?
Yes, I have a question. Can I ask? We didn't ask for questions about this. I assume we are receiving. We're not taking any action other than to receive. Is that correct?
Right, this is just communication, so all we're doing is receiving the communication at this point.
Okay, then yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. So number three on the list is receipt of communication from Oak Flint LLC requesting an extension of the one-year deadline granted May 28th, 2019 for construction and occupancy of its medical marijuana provisioning center located at parcel number 29-51-283-5505-01. Again, it's a motion to receive the communication. Your pleasure, Roxanne? And Michelle? And whenever you're ready, Sarah.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Larry? Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you, Sarah. Okay, number four is receipt of a communication from LaPierre LaPierre LLC requesting an extension of the one-year deadline granted May 28th, 2019 for construction and occupancy of its medical marijuana provisioning center located at 224 East Center Street. So another motion to receive.
Moved to receive.
Second.
Got Michelle and Nick. Are there any comments or questions this time? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. And Sarah, would you please?
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Larry? Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that motion is carried as well. So the fifth and final one, communication is receipt of a copy of a communication from assistant manager Eric Ripley, sent to DMVK LaPierre Inc., Oak Flint LLC, and LaPierre LaPierre LLC in response to requests for the extensions of deadlines we just talked about. So again, it's a motion to receive the communication into the record. Your pleasure. Roger has a motion. Do I have support? Nick has support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move this to a vote. And Sarah, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. You're up, mayor?
Yes.
Larry? Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Roxanne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Looks like that has passed as well. So moving on down to our next item hearings. We need to set a public hearing for May 12th, 2020 at 6:00 PM to review the proposed fiscal year 2021 Alma City budget and related property tax mileage rates. So your pleasure there. Scanning the crowd for a flag. Michelle made the motion. Nick, second. So Sarah, you're on again.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Larry? Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that has passed. Next up, recommendation of bids. First up, we have consideration of a resolution to receive and award bids for the 2020 Opera House parking lot project and to approve a corresponding request for purchase. The bids were received on Monday, April 13th, 2020 at 2:00 PM. We have three bids from Ward's Excavating of St. Louis, one from the Isabella Corporation of Mount Pleasant, and Crawford Contracting, also of Mount Pleasant. Various bids from 358, 423 to 376,908.50 cents, so. The recommended bidder, in this case, is the lowest bidder, which is Ward's Excavating of St. Louis. So what is your pleasure?
If I could interject for just a few minutes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Dave Ringel. I just wanted to let you guys know there was an error in the math during the initial bid when we received them yesterday. The error in math raised it to the 358,423, but it's going to change based on, the college has decided not to accept bid alternate number one. There was an alternate that was a part of this. The lowest bidder incorporated that alternate, did not write that out separately. And the college decided as of today, they do not want to go with the alternate bid additional cost. So the lowest bid will be reduced down by $15,500. So that amount will actually be for $341,243 is what their bid quote would be.
So Dave, just to clarify, the other bidders did not include that in their numbers, is that correct?
Yes, they did incorporate it. And those numbers are reflective in that total bid amount that you see. Those numbers have been added with their bid alternate. They wrote them out separately. However, the lower bid incorporated it into his total cost. So we asked for clarification on that today and they separated that amount. And that number is, the actual winning bid's number would have been 356,743 because that error in math was changed when they addressed their alternate one cost. So we reduced that $356,743 by $15,500. So the actual winning bid amount that you would actually approve tonight for the contract would be $341,243 because the colleges decided not to go with the alternate one cost that was proposed. The city of Alma's total cost for this project would be $153,305. Alma College will pick up a total of $187,938, but we need to approve the overall contract amount tonight, which is that total amount of $341,243.
Is that also Ward's?
Yes, correct. The actual winning bid name does not change. It's a reduction in the contract amount.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, I believe we're waiting for a motion on this yet.
So moved. Move to accept.
We got Nick and then Roger, second. Comments or questions at this point? I guess, Dave, could you go explain a little bit, what was the alternate that is being declined?
Yep. It was an up charge to replace all of the light poles in the parking lot. The college wanted us to look in to find out what the cost would be. The last spring, they were looking at the idea of it, but when they looked through their total cost and the condition of the poles, I would agree with them. There's really no reason to replace them at this time for the project. That's something that's decided to be done later. We could always do that later. There's no ripping up of the asphalt or anything like that. We would just simply replace the light poles. And the other problem was, they were looking at the idea of maybe they would not be able to retrofit the existing lights with LED lights, but it looks like we can retrofit LED lights onto those existing poles.
Okay, thank you, David. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move the motion to a vote. And so Sarah, you can take it over, please.
Thank you. Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Larry? Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, that motion was carried then. Thank you very much. Moving to G, resolutions. First up, we have consideration of a resolution proclaiming April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day in the city of Alma. What is your pleasure? Roxanne? It's motion. Nick, second. Any comments or questions? Does anybody happen to look up how many years in a row we've been doing this?
The 33rd?
Yeah, I think 33.
33, okay. Very good. Anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, Sarah will turn it over to you for a vote.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Larry? Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Roxanne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Sarah. That motion has also passed. Next up is consideration of a resolution to approve reallocation of assets between divisions within the municipal employees retirement system. We've talked about that in the past, so we'll entertain a motion for this. What is your pleasure, Roxanne? And I see Nick. So we have a motion and support. Comments or questions? Any background?
Yeah. Kathy, if you want to take on, this is the, as we've talked about in the past, and I have to give Kathy a lot of kudos here because this isn't something Merz just regularly does. You have to dig to get this information of looking to, we have an overfunded division and we have one that's well underfunded that we've been paying for. So I'll let Kathy take it from there as to how we're gonna, and what we'll do with this.
So like Matt said, they don't like to advertise that they do this, but I kind of pushed and found out about it. So basically, we have one division that is overfunded by almost a million dollars. And we have one funded, that's one division that's only funded 25%, 25%. So we have been for quite some time paying $18,000 a month to try to bring that other division up to at least 70%. Well, now we can take the overage in one fund and put it in the other fund, and now we're not gonna have to pay that $18,000 a month anymore.
Great.
It's really that simple.
Important to note, though, this does not change our total fund of liability. It's just, it will really help us free up some cash flow of $18,000 a month.
Correct.
And that may come in handy with what we're facing in the near term here. But that still doesn't relieve, we still have an overall underfunded position of, I believe it's around five or six million, Kathy, is that something?
Six million, yes.
Six million, okay. So keep that in the back of your minds as well. We're not out of the woods with this thing yet.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. So Sarah, please.
Larry? Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion is carried as well. Number three, we have consideration of a resolution encouraging Michigan's governor Whitmer to issue an executive order that provides potential candidates an opportunity to meet the nomination requirements of the August 2020 primary election while following the requirements of the executive order 2020-2020, 2020-21. Excuse me. So your pleasure.
I have a question on that. Are they extending that because of the orders right now? Like, do people have longer time to get in their petition?
That's what the request is.
That's what we're looking to see, because currently there hasn't been a change to that filing date yet, or even the requirements for the signatures. So it's making, I'm sure it's making it pretty difficult for folks.
Okay.
Anybody care to make a motion? Roxanne and Nick. With that, I guess just for my own, how many do we have filed for our four seats this year? Sarah, do you have an update on that?
I have two officially filed so far.
Two that are completed? Okay, thank you. So we still need two more. At least, right? Okay. Anybody else have comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Sarah, you'll be up again.
Thank you. Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
And Larry is absent. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Looks like that motion is carried as well. So we'll move down to agreements. We have one, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of an addendum to number two rental payment, to number two rental payment in the lease use agreement between the city of Alma as the lessor, 525 East Superior Street, Alma, Michigan, 4801, and Centra Healthcare LLC, who's the lesssee, at 4121 West 11 Mile Road in Novi, Michigan, 49442. So the note says that this addendum was at the request of the lesssee, which has been prompted by the expanding effects of the COVID-19 crisis and is having, the effects of that is having on their day-to-day operations. Have a motion. Anybody? Michelle? Is there a support? Roger, we have Roger. Sorry, motion and support. Other comments and questions? Background, Eric, you gonna do this?
Yeah, I can speak to it, Greg. Excuse me, Sentria is the lesssee down at the old Secretary of State's office. They reached out to us and asked if something we could do to help them out with the rental at this point. And what we've done is basically just restructured their lease payments. So for this next three months, they will not provide us a lease payment, but those, the $1,700 that won't be paid over the three months will be spread out the next 13 months of their lease. So we will receive our full amount once the lease is done.
Okay, again, opportunity for questions or comments?
So you know, also, I mean, Eric reached out to them with a lot of the different programs that are available right now, too. What we're hoping to do is be able to get them over that hurdle and that they can get themselves into one of the federal programs or something to help with their rent for this time.
And most likely, we will probably be back to you to talk about the gym that's leasing the old M E S C office there. I'm hoping the next round of federal talks they have for small businesses pan out a little bit better for some small businesses that were left in the, left between the cracks in this last, during the CAREERS Act.
It has been a barrage, that's for sure. Tried to stuff a lot of things through the pipeline all at once in a very short time, so. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, so we'll entertain a mo, no, we have the motion. We'll go to the vote, so stick around. Once again, please take it away.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Larry? Nick?
Yes.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Looks like that has passed as well, so thank you. Moving down to reports, and the commissioners may receive all of the following reports by one resolution, or a commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. And we have reports from the Alma Transit Center. Well, the Alma Transit report for March 2020, the Alma Transit, M D O T, Michigan Department of Transportation Satisfaction Survey results, the building permits report for March of 2020, and the city manager's report. So your pleasure.
I pull mine, Greg.
Okay.
Matt, I moved to receive the rest and to pull Matt's.
Okay, there are a motion. Our Roger's support. Okay. So we'll take the vote now. Sarah, would you like to please?
Thank you. Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Larry? Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Audra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like those have been received. So we pulled the city manager report. So Matthew, you take it away?
Thanks. I just go through some of the items here to give you an update on where we're at with our response of what we've been doing with the COVID response over the the last two weeks. As you know, I've really decided to put this into two-week operational windows. I think we were more hopeful that this operational window would change a little bit and realistically, it's gonna follow a lot of the same things that we've been going through so that the next window we'd be looking through is, you know, now until the end of April, to the 26th. One of the things that has come up, as we continue to look at things each day that come in new, we had talked the week prior when we started the other window about the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the FFCRA, in the hope that there would be 80 hours of additional hours paid sick time to all of our employees to be used. Tony and I had extensive talks about this and looking at, at that time, really, if you were under an isolation order, the belief was that those 80 hours would be eligible, employees would be eligible for those. Late last week, we did receive a bulletin from our, actually, it came first from 44 North, our insurer, and since been able to see it in other things. The Department of Labor has kind of, who at first gave no real definition of what an isolation order was when this came out, and any of the other previous guidance, has now stated in their order this week that employees who are subject to a quarantine or isolation order are not eligible for a paid sick leave if they are otherwise able to work or telework and the employer has work for the employee to perform, and there are no extenuating circumstances preventing the employee from working. So that really takes those off the board as we were looking before, which I know I'd already spoken with you a little bit about. But do know this, as we've already are seeing a lot of things, things are changing every day. I got a notice from the National League of Cities today. There is a strong push to continue to have this discussion as to what should be included in the FFCRA. We have been, right from the beginning of this, way back in the first part of March when we opened our E O C on March 4th, have been tracking our time, tracking our hours and tracking things. So the idea is we will continue to track all of that as this goes forward to see. My biggest concern as we get into this, this next two weeks, but really looking just beyond that is, right now, we currently still have those members of the Public Works Department, the Police Department, Water and Wastewater, and Transit that are working on paid on call times. We have split those crews, as I told you earlier, and we have managed to keep everybody away from each other enough that we don't have any issues going on there. And I still think that the, in order to stay viable, long-term, we still have to continue to look at that. And so I want to be very honest with folks that we are still doing that. We have had some instances where we've had to call some people in, that's went well. But my concern is if we get towards the end of this next two weeks, that the outlook is gonna have to start to change, where we're gonna have to start to look at some of the, some other ulteriors, ulterior discussion as we go forward. So I think it's went well. I think we are operating at a very minimal level, but have done very, very well with what we've been able to do. Here in the building, not much has changed. We are still close to the public. We anticipate, obviously, this will be the case until at least the end of the month. We, unfortunately, as I said earlier before the meeting, are getting good at this. This has become our normal way of operating, is having meetings like this and doing things like this, going through it. We have set up a schedule for the entire portion of the building here, that there won't be any more than five of us here. We have folks working from home. And again, I would say that two of the newer positions that we've put in place with Aaron being able to get all the remotes set up has been a lifesaver for all of us. The last portion to come online and the remote will be the library. The last, uh, portion to come online, um, and the remote will be the library, and we believe that'll be done later by tomorrow. Um, but they'll continue, uh, to be able to do it. And actually, they've been doing a really good job of, of doing, Marlo's been doing it from home, of, of some really nice videos for everybody still. Viewership's way up from there. Um, this just allows us, there's been some changes over the last week of, of anybody who's still operating, any of the essential orders that are still operating, as to what we have to do every morning of signing people in who do come into work, anybody who comes into work of what they have to go through. They have to answer some questions about their temperature and about how they're feeling if they've been around anybody with COVID. Um, we have still maintained, it's really been, um, amazing to me to see how much is still coming in through the drop box. It's full almost every day. It's not this month I'm worried about, it's the next month as to how much people can still continue to get in to pay their bills and do things. So, um, we're, we're continually working there. Public Services, um, Staff and Water, Wastewater and Public Works, like I said, they've been rotating through their shifts. It, it's really put a tax, it's really taxed them quite a bit, um, because as I told you before, there's been no change in the, in the testing that's required for water. Any of that reporting process still has to keep coming out. We're just doing it with less people right now and getting through very well. Very proud of everybody there. Um, Yard Waste Collection has come up. Uh, I have, uh, so that you know, the purpose behind having to put a stop to the yard waste collection, and this is debated, being debated all across the state right now. Uh, some people are changing their mind and doing different things. Um, the Michigan Municipal League puts out a question and answer, uh, section, um, that I was able to locate. And someone had asked, uh, the order is, at that point, they said, if the order extended beyond April thirteenth, um, and we were scheduling to start yard waste, would we be able to do that and do the pickups at the curb? Um, the response from the Michigan Municipal League, they gave you two types of response to their question and answer section. One would be M M L, meaning it's just their opinion. The second one is an S O M, it came directly from the state of Michigan. The, the order that came back, or the, the reply that came back to that was, per the state of Michigan, um, solid waste and recycling are still considered essential to be picked up curbside. Yard waste is non-essential and thus not to be done. So that's where I made that decision. I know that it has some folks in town are real excited about that. I get it. But, um, uh, I believe that, that we will continue to follow the orders unless I'm told differently by you guys. So, uh, I appreciate your support on where we're going. Um, uh, solid waste, recycling is not, it's been a point of confusion. There is no recycling. If you're putting your recycling out to the community, I've had to answer a lot of questions. If it goes out, if you put it in your blue bin, it's, it's all heading to the landfill. The recycling center is currently closed. So, um, I know there's been some confusion. Well, they're still getting theirs picked up in their blue bin. They are. It's just going into the garbage truck and then it goes to the landfill right now. Um, police and fire continue to operate. Um, as I notified you yesterday, we have had a, a positive COVID test. Um, then the fire department, that's, that all of the reporting has been done and handled properly. Um, all staff has been notified through there. Um, the member of the department is in, uh, really not showing any signs, it just had tested positive, um, due to some other things, but is not showing really any symptomatic signs. So that's good, and hopefully they'll recover quickly. Um, they have stopped, the fire department has stopped, even a couple of weeks ago, their weekly trainings have stopped, so they're only responding to the fires. Uh, I mentioned the library. Transit continues to operate on the non-emergency medical, plus they're really picking up some with their prescription and grocery pickups. Um, I think people are getting the idea of, of what we're available for. You know that last week, we had closed the, uh, pavilions and all of the playground equipment in the city parks. Um, garage sales, we're going to get that posted out this week. You would think that that would be an automatic, people would understand, those are gatherings that shouldn't happen. But we also know garage sales are a huge, huge deal to people. So we're going to get that posted out and, and make sure that people know that, that those will be, will be ceased until further notice. So. And then just, I think it's important to give you a reminder that we do operate under the Gresham County E O C. We're fortunate to have a very good relationship with them. And, um, we've been working through some things, uh, making sure that all of our reporting processes will be, will be handled. Um, just this week, we, we do now know that, um, we will still be setting up our own portal with FEMA. That makes me anxious that there may be some other funding out there that we hadn't thought about because FEMA is now getting involved. Um, and so those will all be handled through the E O C, but we'll have to have our own portal, so we're working through that. So. That gives you kind of where we're at with, in, in terms of the, uh, our response. I'd like to say two weeks from now, we'll have some changes and hopefully we'll be, we'll be making, um, getting some people back working on a normal basis, but we'll have to wait and see how that goes. Uh, I wanted to touch on the transit update for you because this has been, obviously, at the forefront for a long time. Um, Pine River Township, actually, their board passed a resolution, um, for the ballot initiative that would have went off in August. In doing some research, or excuse me, research, the city of St. Louis actually found that Ithaca and St. Louis are up against their charter millage caps, and so they would not be allowed legally to have a millage, um, under those terms that we had been, that would, that they had been exploring. So Brett and I spent, uh, quite a bit of time over the last week having some meetings with, uh, with those three entities, St. Louis, Ithaca, and Pine River, um, with their attorneys from Miller Canfield and from the M T A Association, and really came up with an idea that what they would be allowed to do, um, is to form their own authority between those three entities, uh, of which we would still maintain the city, um, function that we have right now. But those three could then form their own authority, then put a ballot language out there that ties the three of them together as one, and then still contract the services for us. The only thing that's done is it's going to push it from the August election to the November election. And we do know the world is changing drastically, and where I would have told you the support was overwhelming, that Brett had seen come in, and we, we thought of it for sure. Obviously, we know there will, there will be some more work to do on that. But this is really in those other three entities' hands to form that and purchase the service from us. So I, I think now at least we are at a point of having some resolution. So the last thing I'd given you on there is, is really the talks about the County Parks Millage. We've had a number of discussions on this, but I, I think with the, over the last month, how everything changed, there wasn't much time for any more discussion. And it appears that, that, uh, Tim Lambrecht, I had sent you a copy of Commissioner Lambrecht's letter, that on the twenty-first, the County Board of Commissioners is, is looking at, at their meeting to come up with a, uh, change in their ballot language, which would, um, do the eighty-twenty split between the county parks and then through the municipalities that have there, which would create a grant portion for the extra twenty percent. Um, I have some of the numbers, too, I will make sure to send out to you if you want to get some more clarification, the, of what would be available. The three-year grant cycle is what we'd start to look at. And I think that at, at the point in time, I know we had some other talks about doing these things differently. Um, timing now is such that within seven days, they've got to have that language in. So I, I, I would like to be able to, if there's anything to, to take back to them, I like to make sure that we're, that we have some of that, um, to take to them. They're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars a year, they think it would generate in some of the grant funding. So if you have any questions for me, I'm, I'm more than willing to take them. Thanks.
First, I think we need a, a motion to, to accept your, to receive your report.
So move.
Nick and Michelle, or Michelle and Nick, whichever ways you have it there, Sarah. So we have a motion on the floor. Uh, comments or questions at this point?
Is there any idea for the Park Millage, how that grant system would work, or this is just how it would be funded? Uh, really talking mostly about it because I want to get the millage language out. Uh, the ballot language would be the big thing, but, uh, it appears at one point there was talk about being able to do it through the community foundation. I think they found there's a lot more complications. They're basing a lot of the stuff off of what Ingham County has done, who has a similar model to do this. And so I think that, that some of that would be controlled. I would have to assume that would be controlled still through the county board as to how the, how those grant funds would be decided.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is Matt, is the county looking for any support, resolution from us for support for the plan for the parks?
I, I was, I was asked to be able to give them some feedback, uh, as to maybe our thoughts as to what we're trying, what they're trying to do. That, that's really what they asked, is just to see where, where we stand on some of this. Um, uh, I, I, again, I would tell you, I think we're probably, from a timing standpoint, um, if we want to look deeper at some other things that we might be able to do, would be a, a, a chance to really put some things in place over the next few years before the next millage. But this, this might be the best option we have at this point in time.
Good. Um, and I would agree, I, you know, I, it wasn't the ideal plan that I was preferring, but I think it's better than what we've had in the past. And so I commend the Commissioner Lambrecht in particular for his work on this and pushing it through and uh, raising awareness of the issue and helping us out with that. So I'm very much in favor of it and grateful for those that have done all the work to make, put it there. So, thank you.
I will definitely inform them of that.
Okay. Anybody else? With that, I think we're ready to take a vote. So Sarah, you're on.
Thank you. Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Larry? Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Audra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, so that has passed. Next up, uh, portions, or appointments, I'm sorry, we don't have any. Moving down, new business, presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one annual city budget. I presume Kathy is going to take this one?
I'm going to start and then Kathy will finish. So, and, and we're going to try a little technology here, folks. I'm going to actually give you a, share my screen, um, of the PowerPoint. So cross your fingers, okay? Everybody seeing that?
I do not.
It's not up, okay?
It may take a minute. We, there were some delays with the things we were doing earlier.
Let me make sure that I have hit the share. Hang on just a second, guys. That's, that's going to be user error. That, that means that's me. So hang on just a second. Let me get this started there. I gotta hit your share button down here. There we go. Now we will be our, now let me get it. Share. How's that?
It says it started screen sharing. There it is.
Come up.
Whoa, there it is. Looky there.
There we go.
And we're over on the side.
We'll see you guys. So, all right, if we're good. Um, I gotta get out of the way here, though. I think it's this, because there are some things in my way. Th- this is the city's, uh, introduction to the F Y twenty twenty-one budget, and it's intended to represent in financial terms the priorities for providing municipal services to the citizens beginning July first of twenty twenty. Our desires to provide the service in the best, most professional manner are taken into account what's best for the community. Um, as we all know, though, this year presents some very unique challenges with the onset of the COVID nineteen crisis. But we pledge to explore all avenues and service possibilities while being financially responsible as we navigate through this, through this pandemic. Uh, if you remember, these are the priorities that we had all set together, um, not too terribly long ago, in, in a much different world than today. Talking about infrastructure and, and we've all been embracing technology, obviously. Um, continued support for community engagement and maintaining a safe community and city and work environment and remaining fiscally responsible. What I'd like to talk first is, is to get a look at, we're talking about really the general fund, to start with the numbers that we're looking at big. And i- if you're looking at projecting these revenues and expenses, when Kathy and I started talking more deeply about this, it, it became apparent that we're going to have to make some adjustments as to where maybe we were thinking. So kind of in the, the page that I gave you, uh, you're going to see some, three different, uh, looks at this. And the initial projections are, are the revenues for the city in F Y twenty twenty-one were, were projected to be at about four million, three hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred dollars. While our budget expenditures, we're looking at four million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, and we would have, so we would have had a net gain into the fund balance of about forty-six thousand, nine hundred. That came from all of the processes of, of meeting with, um, all the department heads, going through the meetings with Kathy, uh, Kathy and I meeting, going through things. Um, what we've had to do is shift gears a little bit on, on some of the things and, and say, world's changing, how do we react to this? So we've made some initial plans for what we would call a contingency budget, um, due to the initial impact that we're seeing from COVID nineteen right now. And, and, and rest assured, I think we all know this will definitely be, and, uh, we will all feel the effects of this, just how deep. In that plan, we're projecting revenues at F Y twenty twenty-one at four million, seventy thousand, four hundred dollars, and expenditures initially, right now, would be set at four, four million, eighty-four thousand. So there's a little bit over that we'd have to do some work prior to the, um, the June first or the May twenty-ninth meeting, twenty-sixth meeting, excuse me. Beyond that, um, we formulated a, a post coronavirus projection that really shows the devastating potential that we could be up against. And looking at possibly our revenue could dip as far as three million, two hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. I really can't give you a projection that says what would our expenditures be. We can just tell you those expenditures, if we were looking at our essential services at this point in time, are three million, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, which in that, that, that bad scenario leads us in a, a heck of a gap of about five hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. So we're trying to look this through, um, many, many different angles to see where we're at. I think we know what our revenue sources are as to where they come from, um, here on the screen. And again, I'm, I'm just presenting this tonight. We know we still have work to do, so I'm not going to get deep into, to what each one of these means. We, we know where our revenue comes from through those and how this is going to be affected long-term. And these are the departments that actually come out of our general fund. These are the things that we're having to pay for out of that money that's, that's being collected that way. And, and probably the easiest way to get you is here's, here's just a, a good look at, at what we were looking at, possibly at the end of F Y twenty twenty. Now, that, that's a little inflated. Understand that when it says four million, seven hundred seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and fourteen. There is a five hundred thousand dollar grant of which we were talking about earlier tonight, um, which is where that money would come from for the parking lot, and that shows up on each end. So you're really looking at about four point two million, end of twenty twenty is what we were looking at. Budgeting out to that four million, three hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred is what a month ago, we would have told you we were looking at, um, starting in July. That first contingency I talked about, of what we're starting to already try to make adjustments to, drops that down to four million, seventy thousand, four hundred, all the way down to taking a look at that, that post-COVID nineteen, uh, of the worst-case scenario that we might be looking at. These are just the same, looking at those expenditure numbers as to where those would have been, what we were looking at for the budget in, in twenty twenty-one, those numbers that I just told you. So everything continues to move down. It's really hard to bring you a, um, a budget that we can, that we can say, here it is, we, we, we are obligated by charter to bring you something tonight, and this is what we're doing. I think this is well thought out and well planned. We wanted to show you where we thought we were going to be, and then some ideas of where we're heading. So if you look at kind of where we were at, um, looking twenty twenty in the blue and twenty twenty-one in the orange, not much change in any of our departments. Everything was going to stay, um, you know, rather static. And we were cruising along, feeling everything was pretty good through that part of the process, um, until these things started to change. This gives you the numbers by fund, and I'm sure you've had some time to look at it. Understand, this is the, the general start to look at the, at the fund. What we will be doing in the work sessions going forward is breaking down every one of these funds in, in the greater detail, which we will send out to you by the beginning, or I can send it out to you tomorrow, to get those so we can start to work on that, so you see where these numbers come from in all of the different areas. Um, but this would be the general fund amounts that we'll be looking at as, as we look forward, um, to go. And if you look then at those revenues and expenses that we're talking about, this was just how these would all shake out. Um, looking at the end of the year, this year, we were anticipating as we looked to the end of the, or the start of this COVID crisis, that we may have been a little bit over. We've had to spend some money on some things that we hadn't planned on during this time. Um, and so there may have been some overages there at the end of this year, uh, that we would have had to dig in, but looking to get back on track starting next year. This was before the COVID that we hit, and looking at our contingency plan, and then our post-COVID, and you can see the gap that, that is possible there. So these are just some different illustrations of, of some of the different things that we're looking at. And here's really where we get into our concerns and, and some of the talk as we start to look at the budget going forward. Uh, we know federal funding for local governments through the CARE Act, uh, that we had some talk about earlier even, has been allocated a lot towards southeast Michigan. That's where a lot of the crisis has been identified. And it appears that, uh, as we look going forward, unless some of these changes start to happen, that we, we will hopefully see continue to be pushed, um, for more programs, that very few, if any, of those communities north of Lansing are going to really have a large benefit to this, to those, uh, to some of those dollars coming forward. We were hopeful that the nine forty-one income tax credit that is out there, this is the federal income tax that we pay on wages. And Kathy, you can correct me when you get on, if, if, if I was wrong, but I thought we were looking at maybe something like fifty percent of that. Um, it appears now we are actually exempt from those credits, and so it won't be something that would be coming our way. And then as this pandemic continues to create the uncertainty with directives coming out almost daily that change the way we need to manage the crisis. As a result, it's really difficult, if not impossible, at this time to determine if small cities in Michigan will benefit from any of this type of aid, or what finally trickles. or what finally trickles down to us. With that being said, if something does come to fruition, uh, I'm very confident, uh, that we will be on top of that. We are, as we've talked to a number of different communities and different people, we are ahead of the game, at least in what we're tracking and how we're trying to maintain what we're doing, and that, that's good, and what we've already tried to get out in front of. So we, we hope that that will continue. Um, but really with the exception of things that are out there right now, it's hard for us to anticipate where we might go next. Um, we have already been notified, um, that Mbat, who is our, you know, our road, sponsors all of our road and supports our road construction and problems, that they're already have notified us that we can anticipate that we're gonna have, uh, some severely, um, reduced funding in 2021. We know there's going to be a real burden upon all of our residents to pay their taxes when we get to July as to where we're going. Um, we know there's some federal plans that are coming out, that should be helping in some of this, but, uh, we don't have, you know, where people are gonna spend their money and what they're gonna have to spend it on, they're gonna have to make some decisions. The CVTS revenue sharing program, uh, for 2020, each unit will receive a payment of 102.3% of the unit's 2019 uh, revenue sharing and those supplemental amounts. This equals revenue of $1,156,460 for the city in 2020. Um, the projected amount for 2021 is $1,179, which is actually an increase, but the funding from that is based on the formula in accordance, uh, with the state constitution on sales tax. It's pretty obvious that as what we're going through right now, the state's sales tax numbers are gonna dramatically dip during this time. So I'm assuming that we're gonna, we're gonna see those funds even cut further, uh, which we, um, they're not, nothing, anything compared to what they were in the past, and we're gonna see even a, a more substantial cut. Um, we have talked openly, uh, with the departments that one of the things that we know we're probably gonna have to explore is, is proposing wage freezes across the board. We're gonna put that, uh, at a December 31st line where we think we can get a better look at where we're at over that, that six, or that, that, that period of time to see where we're at on there. Um, that would be include all merit increases and cost of living increases that we would have to do. We spoke with the departments now to be really cognizant of their daily operations and anything that's not critical in nature for 2021 that we're gonna have to start to re-explore what we're looking at. As we go through this together, efficiencies are becoming more evident, and already departments are learning to function in different ways. We've got people working from home. We've, we've become so accustomed to working now. Off of these, we did spend money to let you know that we knew we had to upgrade Surface Pros and different things that give us that connectivity to be able to do. Uh, we ran into a situation last week with a lot of folks who are working from home. When our generator kicked on, it was actually turning off our computers because they were all, and they have to be on when we're going through that. So we did have to purchase some battery packs to make sure that those can stay functional through that generator kicking on, which is still important to know that it's running. So we've had to make some of those adjustments. But we hope that this out-of-the-box thinking way that we've been trying to do will be enough to manage this crisis. But we know it's gonna be more difficult than that. Um, some of our departments have already looked at some alternative staffing schedules and really looking to have to limit overtime. In January, Kathy and I had already met, and I really asked her to, you know, research the best way that we could start to do some grant administration. Post-corona, um, being able to manage grants and become experts in that way, uh, could really unlock some funding resources, not only through grants, but maybe being able to, to, to get out to other, um, municipalities in our area that we can help them. And I, and I do think you need to know that as difficult as this year is, is becoming, it wasn't difficult until recently. Um, we're very fortunate, and, and we've had an awful lot of issue we've been going through in finance, and your patience through all of this is what we've been trying to do. But I do have to tell you that, that really the, as diligent as the past administration and what we've tried to do since I've been in here, um, we have been able to grow a, a healthy fund balance. So I think we're in a better position than a lot of folks, but there is a reality that um, we're probably gonna have to look at that fund balance as this thing continues in order to, to continue to function. So um, we will obviously exhaust all the other options that we could, but we would, we would definitely, um, anticipate that we're gonna get into that position. So, um, the last portion here, getting into the restricted funds, these are the funds that are, that are restricted. These don't, these don't take the general fund money. These are coming from fees, from different sources. Those will be pretty much, um, able to be managed on how the revenue flows continue to stream. Um, and we'll probably have to make adjustments even to these funds, even though they're not as generally fund structured to do that. The last, and I, and I'm not gonna go through every one of these line items. This will be the opportunity we have as we get into the budget sessions of working. But really what I'm saying, our next steps need to be, to make a, a decision tonight is, initially, we had put out doing a budget work session, you know, uh, May, May 7th, which would be, I can't remember if that's not a meeting day, but we might have to look to do some things to force some other things in there, because I think it's gonna take more work than having a major budget session on, on May 12th. At that time before the meeting, we're gonna do different things. I'd like to do one May 7th, which would be a, a work-work session, like could be a longer term. I don't have in here April 28th, but I think we put that on the, excuse me, the agenda tonight, because that's our next commission meeting that, that we can at least get together and be, be organized as to what we have to start looking to do. I think that Kathy has built a really good base for us to work off of. Um, my question would be, do we wanna vet things out more often through the finance committee as we go through some of these things? Do we want to continue to meet as, as a full commission? And, and I, I can get with you to set those meetings in the next day or so that we will get those all set. But understand, we will be doing a budget work session on May 7th. I think you can add in right now April 28th, which would be our next meeting, that we would be doing a five o'clock, at least to get together ahead of time to make sure whatever, um, dates we need to make these adjustments going forward. Um, at the May 12th meeting, we will also be then approving as, as we set the public hearing tonight to, to set the millage rates, and then know that we have to have a final adopted budget by May 26th. So, um, I didn't wanna rush through this or anything like that, but that's, that's just kind of where we're, where we're at with those. I'm sorry, I didn't turn your sheet here as I was talking. I got reading. I apologize for that. Um, not what we had anticipated as short as a month ago. Um, I'm trying to get through this. What we're hoping to do is give you a, a good, accurate picture of where we thought we were gonna be, where we think minimum we're gonna have to be, and then God forbid where we may have to end up actually looking. So, um, what I would like to do, and what we've added on tonight is, is Kathy's prepared, and I, and I think it's really appropriate for you, Kathy, to be able to, um, get out of my screen, and I hope I keep everybody here as I get there. Um, let me know from there. Okay. You're out of the shared?
You're back.
Well, back. Okay, thank you. Um, Kathy got with me earlier today and, and had a letter that she really wanted to be able to give you some ideas of what we've been trying to do and what we're, what our anticipated, um, process is here. And, uh, I, after I read it, I think it's, it's, it's a really good synopsis of, of, of where we're heading, folks. So, um, I told her, you know, open meetings act, I wanted to make sure that we're not just gonna throw something at you last minute. So I said, why don't you just read this to the commission tonight? It'll become a part of the minutes tonight so that there, everybody does know what we're talking about. And then, um, but it, but it gives you a better grasp of what it is we're trying to do. Kathy?
Okay. Dear Commission members and citizens of Alma, uh, as we enter our fourth week of social distancing and quarantine, it would be an understatement to say that this global pandemic has changed the world's economy. On rare occasions when we venture away from home, we see stark economic impacts of COVID-19 in very real terms. Restaurants are closed, long lines at grocery stores, and empty shelves. Schools are closed, and friends and neighbors are working from home or have lost their jobs. We too have closed the doors of City Hall and transitioned to working from home for some essential staff, while emergency responders bravely continue to risk their health by coming to work every day. These measures are necessary from a public health standpoint. It is saving lives as we try to control the spread and flatten the curve. We are still responding daily to do, to new mandates, requirements, and directives. We carefully monitor and analyze what is happening and re- react in the best way possible. Our priorities are to the residents to continue to provide critical service and support and that is provided by the city and to keep our employees safe. However, it's not without financial impact and making difficult decisions. The loss of revenue projected in the budget as a result of the pandemic is staggering, and we are facing budget challenges that you would have thought is crazy just two months ago. We are conservatively estimating that the city could lose nearly $1 million in revenue in 2021. As you know, our fiscal year runs July to June, and the city manager is required by charter to present to the commission a balanced budget for the next fiscal year by April 20th. We are fulfilling that requirement this evening. However, we need your help over the next couple of weeks to help us make difficult decisions that will impact how we operate and at what levels of service we can provide for the community. As we adjust to new social norms and economic realities personally, we must also continue to plan and adapt at the city as well. There are some bright points, believe it or not. The city of Alma is financially very healthy, and despite this overwhelming situation, we're gonna get through this. Operationally, the city manager's office and my department, finance, has struggled in the past. But I gotta give him credit. Uh, their conservative nature has given us the opportunity to act responsibly and not out of desperation. The fund balance in the general fund is currently at, as of today, That's up from $3,713,675.86 in April of 2019. It is likely that we will have to use some of that fund balance to balance the budget. We don't really have an option. Right now, the cost of responding to crisis, day-to-day costs cannot be re- reduced. Our highest priority is providing public safety, and we do whatever we can to provide services to our residents. There's a reasonable chance that we will get some reimbursement from federal and state government. We do not expect all costs to be covered, but no direct documentation on funding has been provided, so we're not including any COVID-19 disaster funding in our analysis. The finance department is maintaining records associated with the cost. So if reimbursement is possible, we will have the documentation. In January, Treasury implemented a new credit card processing system through our accounting software. The system gives us more opportunities to communicate with residents and provide other payment options like pay through an 800 number, pay by text, payment reminders, and flexible, flexible auto-pay arrangements. That between the drop, that and the Dropbox is helpful for residents to, um, pay their bill. Over the last few months, the city manager has defined several positions to provide better operational support to staff in the community. The new human resources manager and part-time IT support services representative were critical in making sure the city was able to respond quickly to operational challenges. The need for certain supplies is changing very quickly, and in early March, uh, department heads were already ahead of the game, and we were used, being forward-thinking and allowing the city to collect resources needed to establish remote work oper- options and uh, maintain rigorous cleaning regimens and keep staff informed of changes. We were all thinking way before other people that this was, something was gonna happen, and we were trying to be prepared as best we could. The full extent of the, the planning recommendations, the full extent of the damage to the economy and to the city will continue to change throughout the fall of 2020 and probably throughout the whole year. While we know that a balanced budget is required by June 30th, it is likely to change, and it would be prudent to revisit the budget on a quarterly basis to revisit state and federal funding levels as well as appropriations. The city manager and I are recommending a wage freeze until December 31st on cost of living increases as well as merit increases. December is halfway through the fiscal year, and with hope the impact of this crisis will be more defined and a more clear projection can be determined on whether we can uh, reduce the, get rid of the freeze. There are many capital projects that have already been in place for year 2020, and at this point, those projects are expected to be completed. There are many projects for year ending 2021, and due to the scope of the situation, we feel that, uh, from either the full commission or, or the finance committee, we will need some guidance on what should be prioritized. We are preparing recommendations on other reductions that may have to occur in areas of training, travel, overtime, maintenance, and supplies. Uh, the completion of a balanced budget by June 30th under these circumstances is a very difficult task to ask the commission. But we feel with your assistance, but we feel it is important that the finance committee and the commission be part of the process in helping us with this. Many of the departments began discussing options when we closed, closed the building to the public and reduced operations last month. We are operating at a two-week window for the past month, and over the next few days, directors will be submitting options that will include changes to program, services, and staffing levels for the next month if operations continue to be shut down. Our leadership, leadership team will continue working this week to assess options and to make recommendations. I know this is a very difficult message in a very difficult time. I want to assure, assure you that we are making these decisions with compassion and a heavy heart. Thank you for all you've done and continue to support our community, and we are with great appreciation of what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I know it's a harsh message. I know.
So that's where we stand, uh, as far as, um, getting this thing together and, and going forward. I think we've been as proactive as you possibly can be. Um, I think we, we have different options on the table. I think it could be flexible enough if we look at this properly, um, in order to get us through the waves of this, how this may occur. There, there's just so much unknown. So we're fulfilling an obligation tonight, but the reality is, we know by the 30th, we're gonna have to have something a little more concrete, but then we also have to still be open to look at this on that quarterly basis, at least to, to take a look. So, um, I know there's really no action tonight to take on this, or to receive this report, but um, know that I think over the next two days, I'm gonna get with you guys to see how we want to filter this into, do we want the finance committee to take parts of this? Do we want to have the full commission on parts of this? This is a heavy lift while you all still have personal lives that have been uprooted by all of this too. So.
Okay, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Kathy. That's, uh, tough news to take, but, uh, we certainly appreciate the conservative nature and the way that you're preparing everything in the city to go forward. And it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna come to, uh, to a head later on, but certainly taking a conservative approach is the best way right now. And the past conservative approach that we've taken as a commissioner, as a community, I think has left us in the position we're in now, which as Kathy and Matt both mentioned, is a rather good position. We're, we're not up against the wall yet, so we do still have options, and it's always nice to be in a place where you still have options. Um, so with that, uh, I think we need a motion to accept the report. Nick? And Roger? So we have a motion to support. Does anybody have comments or questions? Um, one other thing I'd like to add and put my two cents in at this point. Um, while I appreciate the finance committee, I think the issues are at the level now that I would encourage everybody at least to notice these meetings, additional meetings, as full commission meetings, so if everybody can attend freely. We don't have to worry about getting too many people in a room, or, well, not in a room, but on the line and, uh, violating any open meetings act. If we just notice them as open meetings, if only the finance committee shows up, that's fine, you know, because of the scheduling, but I'd certainly welcome everybody to be there and have the input, so.
So I have a question. So the, the May 7th, is that set then, or you're just kinda kicking that idea around?
Matt, you're muted, but I believe that one's set in stone.
Jeez, I made it almost to the end without doing that. Um, May 7th is, is one I'd like to set in stone so that we know that we have a timeframe to work with there. And that, that, that would be, remember how we talked about, we'd like to work with there. And that, that, that would be, remember how we talked about, we'd like to have these quarterly work sessions? That's what I really look to that one to be, because that's going to be the heavy lifting portion of this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so any additional comments or questions?
I mean, I guess I'd like to just say, you know, thank you for all your work on this. Kathy and Matt and, and everybody that contributed. I know it's overwhelming, and I know, you know, Matt, you've mentioned kind of trying to take it day by day or week by week. Really, I think that's what you have to do, and I know I'm trying to look forward, you know, look ahead now at our office, and, and we're kind of in the same boat. We have some financial issues. We've got, you know, maybe there's not going to be some pay raises, those kinds of things happening. And it's so hard to make a plan when we don't know where, where we're going to be or what we're going to do. So I just, I commend you guys for doing what you can with the knowledge that you have, which I know is not much at this point, but you know, one thing I do want to say, and it sounds like I kind of heard this a little bit, but when it is, when the states open back up and it is time to come back, maybe you guys might be thinking about staggering some of the work schedules a little bit so that people aren't. If, I don't know if you guys have people sharing offices that are real close to each other. I don't know. There's just a way, now that you know you can work a little bit from home, maybe doing a little bit of that just to ease back in. Because we all know this is, even when the state opens back up, this virus will not be gone. So just a thought, and I think I heard you, maybe, maybe you guys said something about that, so you're maybe already thinking of that, but just good job with everything.
Thank you very much. I think it's going to be a real interest to see culturally, there's going to be a lot of changes. I, I think you're going to see a lot of cultural changes out of some of this as to how we work, how we do things. So I, I, I think that's definitely that we want to prepare for that, and I, and I do think I'll add this in that, as we've even talked about, you know, Nick, you and I have had some discussions about Elma's fire, and how do we kick some other things off? Everything's going to be staged. I, I think you're going to see staging of it happening as we go in, and I'd like to think by April thirtieth, we'll start some of that staging because it would make our, our life a little bit easier, but it has to be safe. So, thank you very much.
I agree. That's an excellent point, Audra, that, you know, they are working with very little information, as we all are. I know in our professional lives, we're doing the same thing, and Kathy, I assume that your projections, when you've got this second and third options or scenarios out there, that, those are pretty much entirely your educated guesses, that you're not receiving guidance from the state or anybody else on how to prepare for the upcoming year.
Well, a lot of it comes from the contingency budget was looking at thinking about uncertainty that might be coming through the next year, even before all this happened. Not knowing what was going to happen with the election and, and that kind of thing. So we had already been talking about presenting or having a different budget in mind because of that. Well, now that's totally blown out of water, pretty much. But a lot of it is just based on you know, research, looking at, you know, other cities or municipalities and, and what they're doing in budgeting and, and, you know, reading different research articles and that sort of thing about what the impact is going to be and just trying to be as educated as possible.
That's appreciated. What used to be our worst case scenario looks like maybe our best case scenario for the upcoming years. So it'll be a challenge, and, but I know we've got a team that's up for it, so. Thank you for that. Any additional comments or questions? With that, we'll entertain a motion. So Sarah, would you please?
Thank you. Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Looks like that is carried or been received. So next, we need to set the following dates and times for the purpose of reviewing the proposed fiscal, fiscal year two thousand twenty one annual city budget, which are, would be April twenty eighth, twenty twenty at five P M, May seventh, twenty twenty at five thirty P M for now. Did you want to add a third date now, Matt?
I, I, I think it might be a good idea to do that.
I, I would suggest it.
May twelfth, the regular meeting. And the May twenty sixth, regular meeting.
Yeah, May twenty sixth will actually be the approval, so the May twelfth meeting would work.
Okay, yeah, let's add that to the list as well. And start at five o'clock. That'll give us an extra hour. If we don't need it, we can always
right.
Something else.
So that would work.
May twelfth at five o'clock.
May twelfth at five. I will send that letter out to you guys too tomorrow, because that will be part of the minutes, so you'll have that, so you have the whole thing.
Okay. So do we entertain a motion to set those times as discussed? Roxanne and Michelle? So we're ready for a vote. Sarah, if you would please.
Thank you. Larry?
And Nick? Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Sarah. Looks like we've set some dates. Next up, we have appropriations. Is anybody inclined to pay the bills tonight?
So moved. All we can.
Did we have a second? Roxanne, did I hear you?
I got, got Nick.
All right, so we have motion support. I guess it's time for a vote again, Sarah. So please.
Thank you. Nick?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
And Larry? He's absolutely, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again, Sarah. Okay, so that is care. We'll go to Commissioner comments. Nick, I've got you next on my screens. I don't know if we all see the same directions here, but.
Uh, no, this is just unusual times and do appreciate the work and the, the forward thinking on behalf of the staff. And wow, we'll get through it.
Indeed, we will. Roger?
Just special thanks to Kathy and Matt for their continued leadership on this. These are, these are strange times, and we've got to bend some rules and do some different things, but we're going to get through this. We will get through it.
Indeed. Audra?
Uh, yeah, I just, I thought maybe I'd give a quick update on child advocacy. Just so people know, we still are serving the community. We're just doing it a little differently, like everybody else. We still have our child abuse forensic interviews going on. That is the interviews that take place with law enforcement. We're only right now doing interviews with cases of severe abuse, physical abuse or sexual abuse. So our numbers are down for safety reasons. But those are continuing. We've had a lot of concern from the community on whether, you know, are we still serving the public and still serving children? So I wanted to just kind of put that out there that we are still doing those interviews with children and law enforcement is a part of those. We also have our baby pantry, but we are not running regular hours. What we're doing is we're just, when people contacting, contact us, we run in. We meet them in the parking lot. We don't have anybody come in the building. So if, when you're out in, you know, on your travels or you're hearing from people, if you have people that live in Alma or in the county that are in need, just have them give us a call. We are checking voicemail all the time. They can email us, Facebook messages, and we will make arrangements to get them diapers, formula, baby wipes, that kind of stuff. We did try to do a drive through diaper drive last week, and it wasn't as busy as we thought. We set it up in the parking lot at the Wilcox building, and we only had about a dozen people come through. So we were actually really surprised because Mount Pleasant has done a couple of them now, and they've done them for like four hour windows. So we thought, oh, we're going to be so busy, and it, it really wasn't. So I'm hoping that's a good sign that people have what they need and their needs are being met. But I don't know. So just if you, like I said, if you hear of people that are in need, just let us know. We'll help them. We just are helping them a little bit of a different way. We're kind of making a plan for hoping that the state opens back up in May. Like I mentioned, we're going to bring some staff, staff back. We're not bringing everybody back. I shouldn't say that. We are bringing everybody back, but we're, we're alternating days, so we'll only have a handful of people in the building at a time. So some people may work, you know, X days, and some people may work Y days, and so it's going to be a little different, and we're going to do that through the month of May until we feel that it's safe. If you've been in our space before, you know that we work kind of right on top of one another. We share office space and we're real, real close proximity, so we're just trying to keep everybody safe by do, by eliminating that a little bit. So, but we are up and running, just like I said, in a different way. I don't want people to think we're not providing services to the kids out there because we are. It just looks a little different. So that's what's going on. Thank you, guys, for all that you're doing. I don't know if there's anybody out there that's watching from law enforcement or the fire department, but appreciate you guys and everything that's going on. It's just a lot right now, and I think everybody's doing the best they can. So, thank you, guys.
Certainly, and we thank you and your team for the work that you're doing, Audra. Hopefully, the numbers are down because the need is not there right now. We can all pray for that. So Michelle?
I just wanted to thank all the workers out there, the people that are working in the, like the gas stations and the stores and city workers and the garbage. Wherever you go, people seem to be in a really good mood and a tough time. And so I just wanted to thank all of them and thank the city staff for all the hard work that they do and just remind everybody to stay safe and once the door is open, we should have a big shopping spree downtown at all the local owned mom and pop stores. So that's it for me.
Well said. And quick recovery with your I guess it was a dental issue you had, right?
Yes.
So we wish the best for you there.
Thank you.
Roxanne?
I just can't thank our staff enough for being so on top of things and going with the flow in the odd, odd times. I think that it's very apparent that the last couple of years of relationship building has been a benefit for all of us, and I, I really appreciate Matt's leadership and everybody stepping up and doing their part, and I miss you all and, and just really appreciate you. Thank you.
Well said. Sarah?
I'm all set.
No comments?
No, no, not today. Thank you.
Not today. All right, Tony?
Yeah, thanks. I have never been this quiet for this long, but I just want to say how proud I am of everybody I run into in the city of Alma and, and Kathy and Matt, everybody on the city commission, the police and fire, and pretty much all the citizens here. I think everybody understands this is serious, and we are all in it together. I don't care if it's the, you know, the, the, the people at the stores, the people in the gas stations. I, I understand that Stephanie Bench, she's a retired nurse from Alma. She was on the school board. For yours, I understand she's in the Bronx helping out. There are some just phenomenal people here, and we are going to get through this, and we're going to be better for it. It's an honor to, to live here, to be able to help you guys whenever I can, and, and I'm real proud of the city of Alma.
Good. Thank you, Tony. Man?
I, I had a lot to say already tonight. I just, I can't stress enough the, what staff is doing and how we're getting through this. I'm very proud of them. Don't forget, those guys that are working in the water, wastewater, every day, what they're going through with their, with their crew split, and then I look at what we're trying to maintain and continue to maintain the city to the best we can out there with the public works, guys. And every day, it's just something a little bit different. We, we dodged a bullet maybe yesterday. We were really fearful we were going to get that windstorm, thinking, man, we've got small crews working, doing that, but we know there will be something else that comes up of that normal crisis during the middle of this crisis, but I, I feel that our crew will be ready to go and we'll be all set to do it. So, and thank you very much for your guys' support. This is going to be an interesting time, but we will get through it. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Matt. And I guess I would just like to echo everything that everybody's mentioned prior to this. Incredible job that the city has done. The team has come together and doing a great job. It's horrible that we have to look at a, a wage freeze going forward after you know, putting everybody through this, but we will get through all this together. Certain their best wishes and our prayers go out to our firefighter that tested positive. It seems to be asymptomatic right now, which is great news, and hopefully that remains that way, and it doesn't spread any further. We're very blessed in our county and our city here that the number of cases that we're facing or healthcare community is dealing with is very low. You know, if you look at the map, we're surrounded by higher numbers all around us. We've got a nice little island here, so I think that shows that people are respecting the rules. They know what to do, and they're doing the right thing. So thank you to all our citizens for doing that and working for each other because we are protecting each other when we do these things. One other thing I'd like to note, we talk a lot about the services going you know, picking up the trash and the, and the grass clippings and whatnot. Just a reminder to everybody, as we come into the grass clipping season and we start mowing our lawns, if you mow your lawn into the street and the clippings go out into the road, those will eventually wind up in the sewers and somebody has to clean that out, and, or they get plugged, and if we're reduced crews, it could be a problem for us, you know, down the road. So please be mindful when you're mowing the grass, don't put the clippings out in the road. Don't let them go down the drain so that we don't need anything else to plug up and cause more problems. So with that.
Can I just say something?
Absolutely.
The nine people that I can see, or eight people, everybody smile, because I'm going to take your picture. So smile. You're going on Facebook. Want to show that the city keeps going on when in the middle of a crisis. Thank you.
All of us have had a chance to speak now. We'll open up to the public. So are there members of the public that would like to speak? And I guess Aaron is handling that from afar. Are you still with us, Aaron? Maybe, maybe not.
He's still there.
Do we have anybody that would care to speak, I guess?
I believe we do. And Aaron will handle that, and, and what we just ask is folks, when you, when he does plug you in, if you can just state your name and your address, please.
Marvin Carano speak first. I know he's been waiting patiently since the beginning of the meeting, so.
I don't know if you guys can hear me? Mr. Carano? Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, sir. Thank you. Okay, sorry. It's the first time using this. Marvin Carano, twenty nine, five hundred Telegraph Road, Suite two fifty, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three four. I'd like to start off by thanking guys for still moving forward. I hope everybody's staying safe. I know this is probably bad timing to bring up this subject, and it's the last thing on your minds, but I think it needs to be addressed. We're one of the provisioning center licensees with a conditional approval at five at twenty eight Warwick Drive. And the reason I bring this up now, we this city has always, always had like a, a strict position on the one year timeline. And our contractors have assured us that, you know, in the event none of this ever happened, that we would have been completed on time. We did start construction. We broke ground, I believe, late February. We did have a little hiccup with the county drain commission. There ended up being a county drain on our property where we had to move it, work with the county with easements, so that, and delayed us considerably. But now we're coming up on this May deadline and with the whole COVID crisis going on. You know, our, our contractors, you know, unsure of what's, what's happening. We did get a letter from Mr. Ripley kind of stating an extension for, you know, as long as like the COVID was going on. But it's, it's going to be probably near impossible for us to just pick up right where we, where we left off. You know, we can't just get in the car, turn the key and go. You know, we got to put air in the tires, change oil. There's a lot of subconscious factors that went out of business. There's going to be supply chain issues. So there's just a lot of unforeseen circumstances and events happening, just like Mr. Shulley stated. I just want to state, you know, when this issue is revisited, we hope that you guys all take this into consideration. We're still moving forward and just want to throw out there, I think maybe a hundred to eighty days would be sufficient, considering everything going on. I hope all of you stay safe. Um I hope all of you stay safe. Um you're all doing a wonderful job keeping the city moving forward and we hope to be part of the city one day. I thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Um do we have another person?
I believe we also have Darren Namie with us tonight. Uh I believe he would like to make a public comment.
Okay, Darren, would you like to state, start with your name and address, please?
I don't think he's gonna make a comment.
Well, I'm, we may not have Darren with us, so.
I, I saw a chat come up and they said that he's no, had no comment, if that was accurate.
Oh, okay.
Marvin speaking again. He's, he's my business partner. He was just on, online watching.
Oh, okay. So were, were there others? I don't see anybody else, but I don't want to cut it off prematurely if somebody wants to speak. Aaron, can you confirm that nobody else is logged in?
I can confirm that no one else is logged in and no one besides uh Marvin has raised his hand to uh speak, so I think we have taken public comment.
Alright, well with that, we can entertain a motion to end our meeting. Who would like to make a motion? Nick? And do I have a second? Roxanne? Do we, I guess, do we need it? Okay. Sarah?
Yes. Ready?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Audra?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Larry? And Nick?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Uh your technological skills are amazing. You all did a great job tonight. It's very much appreciated and. Pass our appreciation on to your staff.
Stay safe.
Thank you, yes.
Bye, friend. Care.
I know.
Thank you very much.
See you, everybody.